I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is everybody's button on?
Ron Baker.
Here.
Rob Dimmich.
Here.
Ted Nester.
Present.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reid. Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Westside.
Here.
Now, the approval minutes for regular meeting, November 2nd, public hearing, November 2nd. Also, the budget final review, September 7th, budget public hearing, October the 5th, and budget adoption, October 19th. Do I have anything? I need to wait on anything?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ted. Second by Rick. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Commissioner business, the jail savings fund, contractual services, $200,000, and legal services, $57,585.
Good evening, Heather Soberg County Administrator. The $200,000 is just, we've got a few more bills that have come in on those contracts. And as new contracts are being signed, as this process goes along, what I've asked for has been used. And so I'm just trying to ask for what we need in the moment and making sure that we're not putting too much money in those lines at any one given time. And then the legal services is for the work that's been done by Fine and Hatfield, actually since the beginning of 2022 to date on the bond itself.
Question, if this is on red, is it on then?
Yes.
Okay, mine wasn't on, so check your mics. Now, does anybody have any questions on contractual services or legal services?
This is all coming from jail savings.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ron, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Commissioner business, additional appropriation, landfill, post closure.
So this one there, after the last round of testing, it was determined that there needed to be two more probes installed at the old landfill site. And so that is just an additional fee that we hadn't expected for this year, and that is to cover that amount.
No funds in there?
Yes.
Waiting for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second by Rob. Second by Rick. Any discussion?
I have a discussion.
Yes, sir.
Or is this another coming call?
We, for years, when I say we, the council for years, placed $50,000 a year into a landfill post closure fund in order to have testing done in purposes, you know, for purposes like that.
As required by law, as if after it closed.
And that money sits in there and is appropriated each year for the testing.
Yes, my question is, why doesn't Solid Waste Management pay these fees?
I believe the landfill was ours at the time.
Yeah. It was. It belonged to the county then, not what Solid Waste, we didn't have Solid Waste then. So.
Used to have what they called a dump. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Seven zero. And then we have a transfer from contractual services, $28,500, to courthouse repair, $28,500.
Yeah, that's just an out of line transfer in the cumulative capital development fund for the concrete that was placed in that storage room, kind of over by the men's room on the first floor, and also the efflorescence removal, the tuck pointing in the ceiling of the walls in the grants development office. And those projects have been completed.
And they are completed?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Chris, second by Rob. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Seven zero, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sheriff's business, jail, physical medical needs, $18,700 additional appropriation.
Sheriff Mike Wilder, this is just to cover the end of the year bills that we see coming in that need to be covered.
This is actually to cover the request that you made last meeting for the.
I was wondering, I'm sitting here like, I'm texting Sherry Moore and even like, what are we covering bills? Because that's one of them.
For the medical devices?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what we talked about in the last meeting.
Yes, but we didn't approve anything, so I put it on for approval.
Okay. Good, because I'm texting Sherry Moore, she ain't answering, so.
That's why you were so slow coming up.
Yeah, slow walked it. I just hope you vote seven on and walk away. Yeah, that was what we talked about, the detectors. So, yeah. I was wondering.
You were covering yourself really well.
Yeah.
Well.
Sounded good.
I was texting and texting.
Since I wasn't at the last meeting, I've got a question. What, exactly what will this detect?
Uh, these detectors go into two or three of our holding medical cells. They will detect if they're breathing, their respiration and stuff. So, and then the, so when you have people on medical watch, as I kind of described the other day, you're supposed to check on them. There can be, there's two different types of watches, but you're supposed to go in there, make sure they're breathing, go in there. Well, the worst thing when someone is sick or not feeling well is go in there and, hey, are you awake, you okay? Wake them up every 15 minutes when they're not feeling well. This will do that. It comes back to a monitor on a screen where the jailer is sitting, and it'll turn red or yellow and set off alert if it detects they're no longer breathing or moving or chest is rising.
Is this a device that's on the inmate or is it just?
No, it's actually on top of the ceiling and just, and I can't really get into the technology. I did send a video, but it somehow measures that and sees that they're, they're moving and there's respiration and their chest is going up and stuff. And does their, I think it gets their heartbeat too and stuff.
Does it do the temperature too?
It probably does. I, I sent that information, I was a little bit better prepared last meeting when I was talking about it, and I am today, and I apologize for that, but.
You know, I spent 50 years in the medical field, I never, I always had to go listen myself.
Yeah.
So AI is back to that point where they can do it then?
Yeah, what's nice is when we do move from facility to the new facility, these can come down and go with it.
Go with it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
So.
Is it hardwired into a monitor at the dispatch?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Sherry told me, I don't know, because we moved money to cover expenses.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rick, second by Ted. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal, when you get into the handbook, I noticed that we spoke on the phone, but I didn't, I don't see it on the agenda.
No, I just wrote it.
Oh, okay.
It'll be in the box, yes.
And transfer and additional appropriation versus the transfer for the health department from office equipment, $1,200, and from furniture, $800. That's a total of $2,000. Transfer $2,000 to gas, oil, and lube. And then there's an additional appropriation of $200. So they needed $2,200 for gas, oil, and lube.
Yes, correct.
Any questions?
Motion.
Motion by Ted. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rob. And any discussion?
Yeah, this office equipment and furniture, what are those for?
Well, they have four hundreds in their budget every year, I think.
Yeah, it, it's part of what you budgeted in their budget for furniture and office equipment that they have not spent, and they want to transfer it from that line to gas, oil, and lube. Yeah.
Got you, okay. I, I didn't catch that, I see now.
All those in favor? Seven zero. Then we have handbook policy reimbursements, transfers, or corrections. All items listed have been checked for accuracy and can be voted on under one motion. I feel for her, I know that feeling. Five A is additional appropriation handbook, cume bridge, the foreman, $2,237. And five B is cume drain handbook, salary ordinance for two week paid time off for a foreman, $2,237. And five C is reimbursement to the public safety for motor vehicles, $4,300. That's the public safety fund. Five D is a salary ordinance handbook dispatcher, 24 hour payout for resignation, $512.16. Five E, additional appropriation correction, circuit court, adult probation, $2,500. A budget reduction, circuit court adult probation, $2,500. And then a transfer from Hallper documents, $1,300, to per diem, petticoat jury, $1,300. Five F is a transfer from EMA public safety line item, transfer from utilities, $470.55. Transfer to supplies, EMA, $470.55. Five G is a transfer veterans affairs, transfer from continuing education, $800. Transfer to furniture, $800. And there is a five I, isn't there? The reason why, we've got handbook sheriff's department sell back five vacation days.
Well, yeah, I was going to do it under other business.
Other business, okay, I'll wait. Okay, we'll do it now then.
Okay.
Let's include this, make that five H, and then the next one, five I. Five H is handbook sheriff's department sell back five vacation days, $902.80 salary ordinance. And then the five I will be the recorder perpetuation. Is there a motion on the five A through I? I need to, what?
We need a, it's an ordinance number, actually.
I'm not, I'm not doing the resolution. That was coming, I wanted to do that. Handbook stuff first.
No, not the dates. The, the recorder perpetuation is an actual.
It says resolution.
I know, but it's an ordinance.
Oh, okay, so that's ordinance, okay.
Yes, so we do need an ordinance number for that if you're including the recorder's perpetuation, which you said you were, so.
How much is the recorder? How much is that there?
Uh, I'm sorry.
How much is a recorder?
Um, I'm trying to see if the number.
Putting it back over to us?
The affidavit said, no more than 325,000 out of recorder perpetuation.
The ordinance. It's 2003-4, an ordinance of the county council, Ward County, Indiana, approving the county recorder's office expenses for the 2024 fiscal year. And that's come out of the recorder's perpetuation fund, which isn't tax dollars, right?
Correct.
What's the, what's the number?
Four.
Four.
Mm-hmm. So we're going to go ahead and do all the way through I then, I guess. Five I, is that okay with everybody? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero on that. Okay, so that's included. All right. Six A, resolution meeting dates. I ran it off, but I can't find it. Yeah, I almost have, I can't find it.
Brad's on there twice.
Yeah, I prepared for this meeting.
Yes, I did.
You know Brad twice?
Yeah, that'd be a mistake.
Two Brads?
The meetings are basically the first Thursday of each month at 6 o'clock. The one in May, we would move back to 7 o'clock because that's the national day of prayer. And then the, the 4th of July is the first Thursday in July, so we would move that to 11th, I guess it is.
Yes, I have it as the 11th.
I don't know what I did with my copy. July is not July the 4th, it's the first Thursday of each month, except for July right now. July the 4th is the first Thursday of the month, and so we would move it to the next Thursday.
Do you want me to make another copy? I mean, I sent him in the.
Did you have the list real quickly?
Yeah, I'll make one template.
Yeah, I'd appreciate you making me another one, I don't know what I did with it.
I think that is July 3rd, I mean, July 11th.
July 11th is correct, okay. It'll be the first meeting I've missed in a long time, but I won't be at the March meeting except by iPad. Unless we would hold that on February the 29th, it's leap year, that screwed me up. Thanks.
I don't have a cracked one, I got the old one.
So, May's got it at 7 o'clock, and July is July the 11th. All the rest of them are the first Thursday. And this doesn't include our budget, this is just our regular meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. That was Rick, is that right?
Yes.
Resolution number, yeah, 10.
10. Resolution, meeting dates. Ward County Council Resolution 2023-10 for our meeting dates. Okay, Rick, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion?
Anybody want to entertain moving the day?
Just bring it up every year. Yeah, talk to one.
I could help you out with a second on it, Rob. I don't think it's going anywhere, but.
Yeah. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Six to one?
Six to one.
And that one is wrong.
You didn't make your motion. I didn't, that's, that's for that motion. I could make a motion now that we have it on Tuesday night.
You still could.
I just did.
Make a motion to change it to Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, make it.
Would you second it?
Yes, I'll second it for you. Tuesdays are four.
Tuesdays are four. What, what I don't understand here is the sequence, because we made a motion to have it on Thursdays, and now we're making a motion to have it on Tuesdays.
You're making a motion to change the date.
Is that an improper motion? Are you making a motion to change the date?
From Thursday to Tuesday.
I haven't had this one done with you for a long time.
Did you sign it?
I did, he did.
Worked out there. Can you do make a motion to change something that was just approved?
Sure, you can put it to a vote.
Okay. Ron Baker made the motion, and Chris seconded it. And that's to make it on Tuesday instead of Thursday.
At 4 o'clock.
At 4. Any further discussion on that motion?
Reasoning for that is then the department has to come, because they never seem to show up at 6. Well. Most, most of them don't.
I know 6 is a lot, but I feel like 6 is a public time, better public time. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving it Tuesday at 4 o'clock, raise your hand. Two. And opposed? Five.
You guys would abstain.
Abstain?
So I was hoping you guys would abstain.
Still wouldn't work, it's definitely for you.
I gotta write all these nays down.
I just marked the yays.
Okay, I got it. Now the attorney's contract, you got it, it's the same as last year.
Must be bad because he didn't show up.
He was nervous how the vote would turn out, so he said.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad to approve the attorney's contract for county council attorney. And second by Rick, was it? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Seven zero. Crystal has checked with everybody on the appointments, and everybody who is listed for reappointment will, will have said yes. And they're basically the ones that are in blue, a dark blue, and a light blue and green. No, the greens you don't consider, excuse me, just the ones in blue.
Just the ones in blue.
So, you can look them over, and we, at the next meeting, personally, we make our appointments then. Think about the ones where we have council, think about the ones where we have council representatives on them, if you want to stay on that, or if you want to be on one of these that you're not on already.
It's an extra, it's just an extra.
Now I have, sheriff wants to speak to us about the jail situation.
Yeah, Sheriff Mike Wilder, and I'll be brief. This meeting just seemed to go a little too quick, so I wanted to hold you guys a little longer. No, I do want to just update you, because it had been a while, I just realized and talking to Andrew, a little bit on how the jail, new jail and security sheriff's office is coming. We've closed on the land, they did that this week, we've, today. So we have got the land purchased, we have been meeting with Boonville, they have passed and made their zoning, changed everything so that the jail go on their, to the land. We do start to meet with the BZA one last time. By January 12th, we're hoping to have what they call 100% complete design. Basically, it's completely designed now, myself and a few others are going up next week and going to do a virtual walkthrough of the entire building, so you get to see everything, like basically can truly walk through the building, see furniture, the outlets, you know, your drops, data drops, it's, I've already done a few rooms, it's, it's amazing the technology, but we're going to do that next week, then obviously it's the holidays, but right now, the, we met county commissioners and the owners reps last week, and everything's on track, on staying in budget, obviously it's a big goal, and the goal is to take this to bid by February and break ground in March. And we're on that track right now, so just kind of an update there where we're at with that. So if anyone ever would want to have any questions or anything, you reach it out to me personally, you're welcome to at the office, but that's kind of where we're at right now. But it's, it's been extremely super busy these last two, last good month or two, just trying to get everything. I, I've never built a house more than this, a large facility that we are and being involved, but it's neat, but it's very time consuming, but we're kind of getting at least to that finish line of getting all of it designed, so.
Have you said publicly where the jail, new jail's going to be?
Uh, it will be, I don't know, the address, you, Andrew, I mean, you will, it's on High Rock Boulevard, where Hebner Trucking was for years. And then the most recent purchase was from DCI, Dotson Construction owned it, that's who we purchased it from. 766 High Rock, 18 acres back there.
So it is public now, is what I was really.
Yeah, and, and it has, because it's been in front of the board of, zoning board over in Boom, City of Boomville and things like that. So.
Sheriff, how's that going to come in out of there, making runs? That's got really, with that hill there, is that where you're going?
Well, I will tell you, Boomville, when we went to their zoning board, they asked a few questions about that, but we don't, our traffic there is very, is a lot less than it's ever been as far as people, because we do a lot of our jail visits and everything now, they do it remotely, almost all of them. So the, the public is not there near as often, you know, and then Bonn's Mount, our officers, you know, they're on patrol, they do sometimes respond from the jail, but the lower part of 62, if you come out at High Rock, you do have good visibility. Now, if you were to come up a little higher on Baker, which they really shouldn't.
Oh, you're down.
Yeah, they'll be able to come out at High Rock, yeah. And then they would be able to get out to six, Baker to six, to 61, also to go south, so.
Visibility there is not that bad, I mean.
Not in the curve, so. I know some, Boomville might have some concerns that we'll have to deal with, but yeah.
68 and four to six, pretty busy right there, but it's on a couple hours, morning and night.
Yeah, and most of the time, our officers during the busy times are out and not at the office, because they're out patrolling and answering the calls, obviously, they come up there to fuel the cars, but we're going to have, that's, but the commissioners are working with us, I think in the next week or two, we're going to have a fuel pump down in their facility there off of Van Road, we're going to be able to use those fuel pumps there also. So our car, you know, guys want to drive all the way to Boomville just to fuel up if they need to. So much of it now they can do by their computers, they, you know, other than to do the box, they don't have to come to the office a lot. So, I just, any other questions, just kind of an update where we're at, and so, just kind of want to do that, because, thank you for your time.
Back from the public, have something?
There wasn't anyone on the sign in.
Motion's in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Rick to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Ted. All in favor? Seven zero, thank you.
Thank you very much for my Christmas gift, I appreciate it.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Yes, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, I try every year. It's not a new thing. Sign everything I'm supposed to.
I think so, I think I ought to.
Not sign what I'm not supposed to. You handed me that one, I said, you know, I'm supposed to say.
What's he doing, he gets two old guys, maybe one year left, and it weren't very good. And then, and then he goes out and gets Ray, who's pretty old, he'll be a good one, he's pretty old, only two years. And he lets everybody else go. I know we can't afford a Yamamoto or an old. You don't want to pay for the exposure.
Well, then I got to think, what was I doing? I was like, I was like, I mean, I thought.
They're driving me crazy, yeah. Redman Bailey Act today said he's perfectly satisfied with the way things are. That's the statement he made last year.
There's four there, so you may, you may have gotten them all. I think one of them, you did sign, and that's lost.
No, they don't. It took them seven throws in the rundown, and then they still threw the ball. I know.
They lost the pitching coach. He went to Texas, and what's Texas do, they get in the World Series.
I counted, I'm like, oh, they keep counting six, who's missing?
If we had that, what was his name? The Atlantic, former Atlantic, Atlanta pitching, pitching coach, not this past year, but a year before, and seven years before.
Oh, Maddox?
Maddox, yeah.
Yeah.
We had Maddox in there with these old guys, maybe he could work some. We had Maddox in there with these old guys, maybe he could work some miracles. We don't have Maddox anymore. And they brought in the scout, so he's going to be the second in the mail behind Ollie.
Still, it's a fun, very fun project. You have nobody set on that bench that's over the age of 50.
Yalvin, thank you.
Right now, he's 35, never played in the major leagues, never made. I mean, it seems.
And they'll get, the bases loaded.
It'll be fun to see. It's fun to see Ward County represented.
I mean, I've seen them with no outs and the two outs.
And they'll, they'll go out somewhere in the empty.
You too. No, no, I, this will be the first year, I think. Ever since I was in grade school, I've gone at least one game a year.
Where are you going this time?
I think this year, if, if this will repeat last year, which is what I'm going to be. I'm not going, I, I watch them on TV occasionally. And Coach Smith's only good one a year.
They're good players, but they're not good.
And they're on their own hill. I mean, I wouldn't mind if they would even trade Aronato for somebody that is strong and upcoming. And I imagine Aronato's not happy because Savely, I promised him, if you come to us, we want to build a team.
I would have, I would have much rather seen him as a prospect. And they would stink this year, but at least you've got two or three guys that you can just say, okay, we're going to ride with him.
Yeah, they really want to get rid of him, nobody wants him.
Why would you?
They just started dismissing him and let somebody pick him up for.